Good evening, everyone.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come before you, Lord, this evening, God, with outstretched hands and a grateful heart. We thank you, Lord, for this great community we get to call home, Avon Park. And Lord, we thank you, Lord, for Highlands County and the state of Florida. Lord, in the great United States of America. Thank you, Jesus, for what you did. It's by you, through your grace, that we're able to be here and we're able to another day. And so today, Lord, I lift up this city council, Lord, to you. Lord, we ask for wisdom be poured out upon them, Lord, and we call for unity here among the council and here in Avon Park, Lord God. Lord, we declare Psalm ninety-one right now over Avon Park. And Lord, and also we declare Isaiah fifty-four and seventeen, that no weapon formed against us shall prosper. So God, your will be done. And Lord, also, we lift up all of our first responders, Lord God. We declare hedge protection over them as well in the mighty name of Jesus.
Amen. I pledge allegiance, symbol of the United States of America and to the republic of which it turns, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May be seated. Thank you very much, Pastor. All right, you now please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Here.
Councilmember McCure?
She is here, for the record.
Councilmember Taylor?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Here.
Here. Thank you. All right, on the matters subsequent to posting, do you want to go over that now, or?
Yes, you have correspondents in front of you from SFSC and Angelica and Emilio Garibaldi. These are in support of item C seven. You all, Lucian's in front of you, I did not receive these until Saturday for the CDBG in support of that grant on item D seventeen.
Okay. Very good. Item number five, we have the employee longevity recognition.
Yeah, the city would like to recognize Randy LaBelle tonight, code enforcement supervisor. He's done with the city, serving for five years now. So thank you for your service, Randy.
Here. Who knew, right? We love you, Randy.
Speech.
Yeah, speech. All right. Well, now approve the consent agenda, this will be for items six through eleven. Is there any item that the council wishes to remove?
I just have a change for item six.
And that is?
On page twelve, it has that I made the motion, but I believe it was actually Shelley for D nineteen.
Okay. Everything else good to go?
Yes.
Do we have a motion to approve items six through eleven with the noted changes?
I'll make the motion to approve C six through eleven with the noted changes.
All right, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, we'll be moving on to item number twelve, this would be ordinance three dash twenty twenty-five.
Ordinance to annex land owned by Cruz Grove Inc., identified in county records as C that twenty-eight dash thirty-three dash twenty-eight dash zero three zero dash zero zero two zero dash zero 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 zero. And located at eleven fifty West Halum Gray Boulevard, Avon Park, Florida, it is a plus or minus nine point two eight acre parcel shown on the attached map into the city of Avon Park, Highlands County, Florida, providing for compliance of the law of annexation, prerequisite notice and post passage notice and provide for an effective date.
Okay, now this will be the second reading. So this will be a public hearing for ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five. Anyone wishing to speak on this annexation can now do so. Seeing no speakers, the public hearing for ordinance number three dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Is there any questions from the council? Seeing none, entertain a motion to approve.
I'll make a motion to approve D twelve, ordinance zero three dash twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, next item number thirteen, this will be ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, Florida, providing for adoption of code changes to code section six, alcoholic beverages, to remove the prohibition on sale of alcoholic beverages between the hours of seven AM and eleven and one PM on Sundays. Providing for codification and repeal of conflicting codes, ordinances, resolution, provided for several issues, provisions, errors, and provide for an effective date.
Okay, once again, this will also be public hearing. So the public hearing for ordinance number zero six dash twenty twenty-five is now open. Anyone wishing to speak on this issue can now do so. Seeing none, public hearing for ordinance six dash twenty twenty-five is now closed. Any questions from the council? Seeing none, do we have a motion?
I'll make the motion to approve D thirteen for ordinance zero six dash twenty twenty-five, removal of prohibition of alcohol.
Okay, we have a motion, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
No.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
No.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number fourteen, this will be ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, amending chapter fifty, fire prevention and protection, article two, fire department, division two, firefighters retirement system of the code of ordinances of the city of Avon Park, amending section fifty dash seventy-eight, deferred retirement option plan subsection B, participation, provide for codification, provide for several provisions, repealing all codes, ordinances, all ordinances in conflict herewith, and provide for an effective date. Restraints.
Okay. Chief, do you want to give us an overview of this?
I can, I don't have a whole lot, but I have a good. So if you remember, this was discussed and negotiated months ago that you guys agreed to, but just waiting on the language. So that's what this is now, is the language to make this official.
Okay.
So this specifically is removing that one year for the drop. The next one you'll do is, is the age limit part. But this one's first, which is the removing that one year.
Okay. Any questions for Chief on this? Seeing none, entertain a motion for ordinance seven dash twenty twenty-five.
Oh, go ahead. Uh, I make a motion to approve D fourteen for the ordinance zero seven twenty twenty-five for the deferred retirement option plan.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you, item number fifteen, this will be ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-five.
An ordinance to the city of Avon Park, amending chapter fifty, fire prevention and protection, article two, fire department, division two, firefighter retirement system of the code of ordinances of the city of Avon Park, amending section fifty dash fifty-six, benefit amounts and eligibility, provide for codification, provide for several provisions, repealing all ordinances in conflict herewith, and provide effective date.
Okay, we've already gotten an overview, do we have any questions specific for Chief on this? Seeing none, entertain a motion for ordinance zero eight dash twenty twenty-five.
I'll make a motion to approve D fifteen, ordinance zero eight twenty twenty-five.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
Who wants to claim it? Okay. All right, we do have a motion and a second, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, thank you, sir. We have a special guest with us tonight, as item number sixteen, be the Highlands County Sheriff's contract discussion. We do have the sheriff with us. Answer any questions? And hopefully not take us any of us to jail at night. All right.
So I just want to preface this discussion with my very first council meeting live was September twenty-third, twenty twenty-four, and it was a very lively discussion with the sheriff about renewing or extending his contract for one year. So as I sat in the audience, I thought, I'm going to put a reminder on my calendar first thing when I get in the office on Monday to have this meeting well in advance so that you all have the opportunity to discuss with him what you would like to see in the next contract, and hopefully it'll be for more than one year at a time going forward. So this is your opportunity to have that discussion.
Well done. Sheriff, do you want to start out with anything?
Do a little bit of presentation if you'd like, I would like to thank the doctor for doing it this way. The appropriate way to do this, this interaction, I believe.
Is that better?
There we go.
Sorry about that. Do I need to start over, or?
Nope, you're good.
Good, so I believe it said in the contract, myself and the city manager, we're supposed to meet a couple of times, and as, as luck would have it, I'm either always busy, she's always busy, and not just her, the previous city managers dating back to since I had taken off since two thousand seventeen, so this kind of forces the hand to be here to answer any questions and to kind of get it out there on what the topics might be and, and to hear your point of views as, as we're constructing budgets moving forward, so I think that's it's certainly a better practice to do it this way. So I'm in favor of it, but you guys aren't.
Very good.
So moving into that, I'll, I'll go kind of over what I'm looking at for the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, and then I'll open it up to you guys if you have any questions. As we get through this, I will kind of, kind of key on what some of the things we've seen this year, as we're in the middle of our fiscal year now, some shortfalls that we're noticing, some of the reasons for those shortfalls, and then, and then give you a kind of what my proposal might be for, for the end of the year. So first and foremost, thank you guys for allowing me to be here this afternoon, and it's my honor to get this opportunity to serve this community as the sheriff. And again, the purpose of this presentation this afternoon serves as the Highlands County Sheriff's Office notice budget proposal for administrative and law enforcement services for the city of Avon Park for the upcoming fiscal year of twenty-five, twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six. The House County Sheriff's Office, myself included, expect no action to be taken here tonight. My intent is to provide the council with information regarding our current fiscal year as well as the cost of services that we are, we are experiencing currently. And then move into a discussion of what the plan might be for the upcoming twenty-two, five, twenty-six fiscal year. To kind of regress a little bit and talk about what we've seen so far this year while providing law enforcement services for the city of Avon Park over the last year. And, and I, I preface this, I understand we have not seen our fiscal year come to an end yet. So I went back into the previous fiscal year to get statistical data for you so I could show it at a year at a time, it would be easier to understand that way, I think. So your deputies that are assigned to the Avon Park area have responded to sixteen thousand calls for service over the last year and written approximately two thousand, or a little over two thousand incident reports. That's compared to two thousand, for a two-year period, two thousand twelve to two thousand fourteen, when we first took over law enforcement services for the city. For a two-year period, we were answering almost five thousand calls for service, so we're looking at about sixteen thousand calls for service now per year. Now, the deputies assigned up here have conducted over two thousand eight hundred traffic stops over the course of this year, written four hundred citations and issued over two thousand warnings to drivers within the city limits of Avon Park. They have investigated approximately four hundred and eighty traffic crashes as well during this time. Our most common calls for service are two hundred and thirty-three thefts, and those thefts range from grand thefts to petty thefts, retail thefts, just your normal theft of a vehicle. But most of those thefts are from our retail establishments at Walmart. We get a lot of thefts from, from that particular store for whatever reason. We responded to two hundred and eight disturbances, a hundred and fifty-nine batteries, one hundred and thirteen Baker Acts, and ninety-three child abuse investigations. The House County Sheriff's Office has investigated three homicides within the city limits during this time, they've all been solved. One of those is a homicide where actually we had an officer involved shooting, but we still have to show that as a homicide even though we were the one that took the life. That has been justified, it was a justified use of force. But nonetheless, it still shows as a homicide as far as our statistical data goes. We had six attempted homicides, three of which have been closed by an arrest or other. Two of them have been closed by a waiver of prosecution, and we have one that is currently still open and being investigated. Moving on into our twenty-four, twenty-five interlocal agreement, kind of talk about that and talk about a little bit about the shortfalls, so as the council knows, our twenty-four, twenty-five interlocal agreement was for two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars. And that was basically for personnel services, so all salaries and benefits of the members who are assigned to the city of Avon Park. And then we had an additional two hundred and ten thousand, three hundred and fifty-seven dollars, which for, for capital purchases, and mainly that was for vehicles that served in this area. So you add those two together, our total contract was for two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars, or two, I'm sorry, two million, nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars. So that was what our contract was for, actual cost of what it takes to cover the city of Avon Park. In total, it was four, four million, two hundred and forty-three thousand, nine hundred and eighty-six dollars. But it has always been a practice of the sheriff's office to absorb the administrative costs, cost for HR, and the cost for general counsel, just, just a different array of administrative costs, and those costs are about eight hundred and twenty-seven thousand, eight hundred and eighty-five dollars. So leaving the total shortfall of, of about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So that's looking at our contract and what it costs for us to do law enforcement services up here. The shortfall was about four hundred and ninety thousand dollars, a little over that. We think, or we pretty much know, the reason for this is several issues, but two of the main reasons is the, the, the timing of the interlocal agreement in which it was signed. We did not know, and it's no fault of anyone's in this room, we did not know what the medical insurance was going to be for each one of our members. It came in significantly higher than what was than what was estimated. Actually, it came in about forty percent higher. I was fortunate enough that, that I was able to cover that cost for all of our members at the sheriff's office. So they saw no increase in their insurance, however, the agency did see a significant increase, about a forty percent increase. And as, as well as most of you probably know, with, with Florida retirement systems, are, there's a significant increase there, especially when it comes to special risk members. So special risk members are those that are in a job that they get a higher retirement, where normal retirement might be one point five. High risk gets about a three, a three percent increase. But for us, in, in the interlocal agreement, if you're twenty-seven point five members that are covered in the interlocal agreement, twenty-seven of them are special risk members. So we saw a significant increase in that area too, which is contributions that the sheriff's office has to make to the Florida retirement system, which, which is pretty significant. But that's, that's what we're, what we think are, are the main two reasons for the, the big shortfall. For the upcoming twenty, twenty-five, twenty-two, twenty-six fiscal year, I'll be asking the Highlands County Board of County Commissioners for a pay increase for members of the Highlands County Sheriff's Office. And the reason for this is due to the sheriff's office for other sheriff's offices in the immediate area have a starting annual pay of sixty-three thousand dollars per year. As well, has a twenty thousand dollar signing bonus. So this is a, a person who has been through the police academy with no experience can go just to the north of us here, and will start out at sixty-three thousand dollars a year. Our starting pay at the Highlands County Sheriff's Office for, for someone with no experience is just over fifty thousand dollars a year. So I, I feel to stay competitive, to make sure we're attracting and retaining professional law enforcement officers, I feel this pay increase is needed. I'm going to ask for a ten percent increase. I do not know at this point what that increase will be. It could be five percent, it could be ten percent. Maybe the Board of County Commission will say, Sheriff, your guys are doing such a good job, we're going to give them a twenty-five percent. But I don't know that. I can't, I can't guess that. But so what I did with your, with your proposal here, I have stayed the middle of the road. I'm going to ask for a ten percent, just like I'm asking for the V O C C. And once I hear the, the result of our budget proposal for the counting, I will let you guys know as soon as I know that number. And I, I think that's, that's fair to, to you guys. So moving back to what my proposal is for you guys, so I mentioned the shortfall was about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I say that four hundred and eighty thousand dollars to the original two million, seven hundred and fifteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-four dollars for personnel services. I'm going to ask for a, an eighteen percent increase of that number in this proposal, which is about four hundred and eighty, like I said, four hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And then add on top of that, the ten percent increase for the salaries, again, that number's going to fluctuate, I don't know what that number is at this point. But just to say it was ten percent, that number's about three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for a total increase of about eight hundred thou, a little over eight hundred thousand dollars, moving into the fiscal year of twenty-two, five, twenty-two, six. So that would basically make the budget that your current budget is two million nine hundred and twenty-five thousand, five hundred and eighty-one dollars, it would increase to three billion, five hundred and twenty-four thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Or roughly there.
I thought you'd have better news than that, I'm not going to lie to you.
Well, if you, if you could prevent me from losing deputies to Pol, to Sarasota and Pinellas.
We understand.
Sheriff Blackman, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
How many available positions do you have that are not occupied in, in, in your squad? I don't know your squad, I guess.
The sheriff's office is about four hundred and eighty people that we have working there for law enforcement, which is basically what you guys hire us for, law enforcement, we have about eighteen open positions currently.
And are you having trouble filling those?
Yes, ma'am.
Because of the, the yearly, or is it just?
I'm having problems filling them, not only because of the yearly salary, but also because of people that want to get in law enforcement these days. Just, let's just take the, the sample size of Avon Park. And what how many years ago, what is that, fifteen years ago, they were answering four thousand, eight hundred calls every two years, to now sixteen thousand calls every year. So the, the, and the types of calls that our folks are responding to are much more dangerous, nobody, it doesn't seem nobody wants to get into this line of work anymore. Or they're few and far between, still some, my son got into it, I tried to convince him otherwise. He, he is, he's enjoying the sixty-three thousand dollar annual pay up in Pol County.
So how many, how many law enforcement officers do you have assigned to our area?
Twenty-seven.
Twenty-seven.
That are assigned here, now we have a lot more that come into the city limits and do work. An example would be crime scene detectives, K nine handlers, and stuff of that nature. Our narcotics unit, a lot more that are in the area doing work, but you have twenty-seven that are assigned in here.
Okay, and do you have them zoned for different areas in Avon Park? Okay, so can you provide that, me with the breakdown of that, or you have to look? Are you having breakdown, like I'm curious, how many is in the south side, and how many do you have assigned on Main Street? And how many do you have assigned out to Avon Park plates?
Yes, ma'am. Right, I don't have that with me currently.
Okay, that's fine.
I can, I can give you a breakdown of the zone and where.
How many deputies per shift, maybe that would help?
So there, there would be three deputies and one sergeant per shift. And the shift is twelve hours every.
And that's just for the city limits of Avon?
That is correct.
Okay.
And you'll have additional in the, within the north district, an additional three deputies and another sergeant in the north district, which the district is right around Home Depot, always at the county.
So the things I'm concerned with, and I don't know if anybody else shares my opinions on this, that's okay. It drives me insane when I see semi trucks going down Main Street. Because one, they're not supposed to be there, it is posted that they're not supposed to be there. And two, for some reason, some of them decide that just because they're a big truck, they shouldn't follow the speed limit. Constantly, I see them going through, and I know that there's businesses on Main Street that is not getting a pallet aside.
Sure. So, so we can certainly answer to the speeding.
No, no, not, not necessarily speeding only, but the fact that the trucks are on Main Street.
Sure, so I'll, I'll go get to that.
I'm sorry.
So we can, we can certainly address the speeding issue, we have no problems with that, but there was an attorney general's opinion. And I believe it was in two thousand and four that if it's a public street, you can post signs that says they're not allowed to come through there, but we cannot enforce that.
And that was his what, opinion?
It's an attorney general, the state of Florida Attorney General. It's actually Attorney General number two zero zero four dash one three, if Mr. Burr wants to write it down. In fact, it's, it's literally unconstitutional for us to write them a citation for that violation.
So then why do we have, why do we have it posted then?
Oh, I, that would be something, I think that's right, we didn't post them.
So it was an ordinance, I believe.
I believe so, yes.
So if we can't have our code enforcement man, sorry, Randy, if we can't have our code enforcement department enforcing that because he doesn't have the ability to ride a ticket, then who's supposed to enforce that?
Yeah, you're not going to find a law enforcement officer to enforce it because it's unconstitutional. We're going to sue if we.
And that's not just a sheriff's department thing, that would also apply if we had.
In fact, this attorney general's opinion came out of the Cape Coral area, and in this particular issue, there's a lot of canals that, that traverse the city, and only certain numbers of streets that have bridges over it. Well, the people that live on those streets didn't want big trucks coming up and down their streets, and they tried to post it. And the, the city of Cape Coral looked to the attorney general, say, can we post these and issue citations? And they, they were pretty direct in the, in their, in, in his opinion at the time, and said, no, you cannot do that. You cannot, you cannot restrict the access of a public roadway.
Okay, so that's going to really cause a lot of trouble when we get this road repaved. And we only have two lanes going through there, then, I, I mean, that's just, that's just me talking them.
But.
Be a real big problem.
I think the idea is that if it's not convenient for these trucks to come down Main Street, they're not going to. So once it gets choked down and traffic becomes slower, it becomes an issue, they're going to seek the fastest roadway to get through town. Right now, it may be Main Street because it's more like a highway than a city street, but that will change very soon.
So, and you went back to the speeding, not the trucks, because
Yeah.
the party covered that, so the speeding, the cars, how often do you have control here's monitoring speed on Main Street?
So I can give you numbers on when they're out here and what kind of details we may have run in the area or something. I can't say that they're out here at a specific amount of time, I would not be able to tell you that.
Well, no, because then people would not speed, I agree with that.
But generally, what we do is someone calls, for me, example, if you were to call me and say, hey, we're having a problem on Main Street, generally what I do is ask, okay, what time, what days? And then I pass that on to the major law enforcement bureau, and then he will assign deputies for that particular time until the issue is taken care of. An example, we were having a problem behind the mall in, in Sebring on Sparrow, and we, we were just in there running a, a traffic detail for the last two or three weeks, and they were in there till the problem is kind of solved itself. People are tired of getting citations, so they, they sense slow down a little bit.
Well, I hate for this to be on public record because I know those kids are going to be so mad, but those high school kids, when it's time and they let out, they treat Main Street like it's the autobahn. It's, they're, they, they go crazy through there.
Sure. I, I do know, and I, and I can't speak to the exact date, I, I was listening to the radio when I was working the other day, and there were some folks, you know, some of folks are deputies right around where the city, where the city council usually meets. And they were on Main Street, and I heard them do several traffic stops down there, so somebody must have got to them, but I will certainly make note of it as, as well. I do know that school's fixing to get out here in, what, two weeks or a week and a half? So it might, it might be something we, we concentrate the next school year, but we'll certainly make note of it. And for this next week and a half, we'll get somebody out there to try to slow them down. And I'm assuming it's in the afternoon, you said, when dismissed, I'm assuming it's in the afternoon mostly.
No, it's in the morning too.
Okay.
To be fair, I can't say it's the kids in the morning time. But I can pretty surely tell you it's the kids in the afternoon.
Understood.
Okay. Any other questions for the sheriff?
Yes, I have some.
Go ahead.
Sheriff Blackman, although Ms. McCure said that she see the high school kids speeding down Main Street, they're speeding all over Avon Park.
Yeah.
Let's just keep this real. They're speeding all over Avon Park. And I don't see your deputies doing anything about it.
Well, in the last year, and just like I had mentioned, we did two thousand eight hundred traffic stops within the city limits of Avon Park.
It's obvious, Sheriff, they're not doing enough. They're just not doing enough. They go up and down Memorial, like, like they own the autobahn. And that's a residential area. And they're passing each other, I mean, going, some of them going sixty, I'm like, where are they going? It's, 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 it's bad. It's really bad. And let's go back to what she said about the truck. Wh- when did the, um, when did the, um, they came up with this particular, uh, what, who did you say that make a decision that we can't do anything about the trucks in the city? Attorney General.
Attorney General.
When, when did, when was that decided?
Two thousand and four.
And so it's been like that since two thousand and four, that trucks just gets to come into the city. What is the purpose of we repaving our roads and trying to make our roads nice and trying to make our, our streets nice? And then you got big old deuce in the house and five tons just coming in and just messing up our roads. What, I mean, what, we just wasting money?
Man, that's a decision you have to make as a council. You're asking me as the sheriff, I can't enforce them coming up and down the roadway.
Okay, well, let me ask you this, Sheriff. Um, who, who decide what the truck, truck routes would be? Isn't that the county commission? Who decide that?
No, ma'am.
Who decides that? Or what the truck routes would be in the city?
Florida Department of Transportation, that would be my guess.
Okay, well, I have a list that said Main Street and Memorial is not to be used as truck routes. I have a list of all the, all the streets that is not to be used for truck routes.
So, Ms. Taylor, council member, um, that's an ordinance that the city adopted.
Okay, and so you're saying, like you said to Ms., Ms. Shelley, you can enforce that because of two thousand and four decision?
Yes, ma'am. I'm not sitting here saying I agree with that. Uh, I'm just saying we can't, it would be the same set situation as loud music coming from a vehicle. The loud music coming from a vehicle, we cannot enforce. It's a, someone's constitutional right, it's their first amendment right to play loud music if they want to. Now, if it's coming from a residence, we can do a little bit, something different, but coming from a vehicle, we can't do it. I'm not saying I agree with that. That's just the way the law is.
Well, since you're talking about the loud music, let's, let's still talk about, we got, I still got problems with the loud music. You know, um, I told you the last time you was here, I think your deputy was doing a great job when it came to the loud music, okay? I'm on the south side. It, it's not really happening on the corner of Delaney and Hal McRae anymore. Because, you know, that became a big issue, you know, when you came before the city. But over there in the, um, what we call the what I'm gonna call the street, the Garrett Street, o- over there by the old beachfront, it's still happening. It's still happening. You got people, I know of three families that have moved out of the area because of that. And these are taxpaying people. And so, I'm gonna be honest, Sheriff, I just got tired of calling. Because nothing is being done about it. Okay, uh, let, let me, let me rephrase that. They'll go over there, they'll talk to them, they'll lower it down. Give them two Sundays later, they're doing it again, and then your deputies go over there and they'll lower it down for a Sunday or two, and it starts back up. And I'm the one that gets, getting the complaint, Sheriff. Uh, your, your, your deputies ain't getting the complaint. I'm getting the complaints all over the city in that area.
They responded, they got a complaint.
But I guess the point I'm trying to make, Sheriff, is that why is it that you go over there that one time and it happens that one time? What are you gonna do going forward? Why do we have to keep calling?
So how the county ordinance works when it comes to noise, uh, specifically coming from a building or crossing real property lines. Uh, the deputy would respond, would get a complaint. We have to first give them a verbal warning, turn the radio or music down, whatever the noise may be. They don't do it, then we have to respond back. Then we have to give them, per the county ordinance, we have to give them a written warning. And then if it doesn't stop, we go back, then we're allowed to then start issuing citations. What we see is, is sometimes the issue, uh, let's just say that the, the noise might be coming from a bar. Probably if I know the area that you're talking about, it's probably coming from a bar. Well, who turned it up this time is not going to be the person who turned it up in two weeks. It's not going to be the same person who turned it up in three weeks. So we have to try to find the owner, give the owner a verbal warning. Give the owner then a written warning, and sometimes that takes time. I, 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 I feel your frustration, because we do get, contrary to what you might think, we do get complaints about that. We don't only get them at the, uh, in the area where you referred to, but in, in Sebring area, we receive the same type of claims, complaints, and in Lake Placid, we receive the same type of. And we try to be consistent in the way that we enforce that county ordinance, and by the books, by the way, uh, so that we can have some consistency in the way we do things. Uh, but we receive those same complaints that you're receiving.
So, so Sheriff, let me make sure I'm understanding. You say, this time you go, this person turned it up. You're talking about a person, or you're talking about a building?
Well, it would, it would require a person to turn it up, yes, ma'am.
So if, let's say you got ten DJs came through that one building in one month. Isn't it still the, the owners who own the building, isn't it his responsibility, not the person who turned up the music?
That's what I just said, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so, so if the complaint is still coming from the same building, as much as the music has been going on over there, and, and many times if you guys have had to go over there, that building should be shut down by now. A- as much as you have had to be called over there. I mean, I live a good two, a mile away, and my windows and my, just rattling and shaking. You wake up to it. I just, I just didn't gave up on it. I just, because for what? You're gonna go over there and turn it down this Sunday, and next Sunday is gonna be back up? So I, I wanna know, wh- what is gonna be done in the long term? Instead of what's gonna be done just on this Sunday?
Where, where we're going to enforce the ordinance, just as it reads, we're not going to treat anybody differently than what we treat anybody else. And we're going to be fair in how we apply that laws. The deputy's going to make that decision on the, on the side of the road, there sometimes at two o'clock in the morning. Whether they can get a hold of the owner, whether they can get a hold of the DJ that happens to be there that time, or whether they can get a hold of the owner, and the owner says, well, lease the building out to, to somebody else for this weekend, it's their responsibility. The deputy's gonna try to make that decision on the side of the road, and they're gonna try to be fair with it when they make that decision. And I think you would want that out of any of your law enforcement, uh, officers.
All right, I think that question's been answered about as good as we can.
I'm gonna just be on.
So that's a pretty difficult question. I know that the, the residents that live within the city limits pay taxes to the county, those are ad valorem taxes. And the sheriff's office does get a portion of those, of those funds to spend. Uh, but those spend, th- those, those funds are not necessarily just spent on law enforcement. When I say law enforcement, deputies on the ground, actually doing law enforcement work. Uh, those monies go for housing inmates, uh, for medical bills for inmates that are, that are housed at the sheriff's office, feeding inmates. Uh, they also go for serving as court security. So the citizens of Avon Park have court proceedings that go to court. Uh, so they, they're all taking advantage of those taxes, uh, as well as other things that we don't charge the city of Avon Park for. So as, as, as I mentioned earlier, crime scene detectives, canine detective, uh, special investigations, as far as, uh, uh, special victims units or undercover, uh, undercover, uh, detectives, as well as our, even though Ms. Taylor doesn't think we have anybody in that, in that area of town, our cops, DAPs, you know, who, who spend all of their shift in the south side of, of Avon Park and doing fundraises and then doing back-to-school events and stuff of that nature inside the, uh, what we'd call the south side of Avon Park. So, uh, that's where those ad valorem taxes go. That the city, the, the citizens of Sebring, Avon Park, and Lake Placid, who live within the city, they all, uh, benefit from those taxes that they make.
So approximately a third of the, of the taxes that comes from the city of Avon Park compared to the other two cities and, and well, the outside areas?
Uh, I, I would, I, I would have to look at those numbers, do a deep dive in it to see exactly, I, I, I would I would be remiss to say in a third, because you have about ten, uh, nine thousand, ten thousand folks that live in the city of Avon Park. You have about eleven thousand live in the city of Sebring, and what do you have, maybe fifteen hundred that live in the city of Lake Placid?
I think now we have more in Avon Park than we do in Sebring. And I think those numbers may come up, but I'd be interested if you could come up with a number like that. I'd be interested to help cover that shortfall. And then the, the last question I have for you, thanks again for being here, is that I know that the last several years, you've given money back to the county that you have not used. I think the last couple of years has been close to like two million dollars. And so my question to you is, where does that excess money come? You must have a, a, a lot of different funds that you use, whether it's for, for crime labs or for the different patrol divisions or detective divisions or, or whatever. So where you give money back to the county, what departments or what funds does that come from?
So we have approximately thirty to thirty-five different funds or different accounts in the sheriff's office. And those monies, when we give them back to the county at the end of the fiscal year, uh, most of those are just a hodgepodge of different funds. So it might be a grant that we received, that we didn't spend the entire portion of the grants, we're required to give that back. Some, most of it actually comes from lapsed positions, positions that we budgeted for, um, at, at the beginning of the year, we never filled those positions, or we had a, a person that, uh, was there. Let's say a sergeant or, or a lieutenant that makes a significant amount of money. They, we budgeted for their position for the entire year, but they left two months into the year, into the fiscal year. All those monies, we have to give back to the county. Uh, so it, it could come from, uh, uh, inmate medical. So we, we budget a certain dollar amount. And as the year goes on, we pay that amount, but we try to scrub some of those bills. So let's, let's say the, and I'm just gonna use basic numbers, the hospital bill may have been a hundred thousand dollars. But we were able to scrub that bill and, 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 and deal with the hospital and pay only six thousand dollars for that bill. So there were some extra funds left over, uh, through the hard work of the, of the men and women at the sheriff's office, uh, that, that allowed us to give that money back.
Okay. So as far as you know, none of the funds come, uh, unused funds from the city of Avon Park.
That, that is correct. If there was any, if there was any funds left over as a result of this contract, just as we do with the school board, uh, because we have a separate law enforcement contract with them, any of those funds would be returned to the city. And I think we've actually done that in the past, and I think there's some record of that.
Yeah, wherever you didn't get all the office, yes, spill, yes. Okay, thank you, Sheriff.
Sheriff, my only question would be, how do you decide how many deputies you need in a specific area? Is it strictly call-based, or is there something different?
Well, there's, there's several things that we look at when we're deciding uh, where our zone lines would be. Uh, a lot of it is based on population. And, and then, and a lot of it is based on calls for service. And then we compile those two and, and then try to make the best use of our dollar than we can. We certainly don't want a, a deputy who, who's assigned to Avon Park. We don't have a, a zone, you know, we don't have a deputy in, let's say, uh, in the Sebring Ridge area, uh, or that would not be the, that would be, that would be ours. So what does the, uh, the trailer park there across from Memorial, LA, Crystal Lake, or whatever? So we don't want to send a deputy back and forth all day long, responding to those calls. So we would try to make a, a, an economic decision on where that person is best placed, based on exactly that call for service. Uh, population and the, uh, you know, the, the, the needed, the needed deputy for that area.
I guess what I'm trying to outline is justifying the cost difference between the city of Avon Park versus the greater Avon Park area, Avon Park Lakes or Estates or something like that.
Sure.
So trying to see, you know, okay, we're, we're spending, you know, three and a half million dollars. What exactly is that getting us as far as, you know, deputies per population number, or deputies per call number, or something to that effect?
I do not have that with me today. I would be more than happy to get that number for you.
I'd be interested to see it.
Yeah, so see now, you said you have can, can you tell me, so you, let's, let's say, Mr. Bernard seemed to think my number was a little low. Uh, I said nine thousand residents in the city of Avon Park. Let's say there's ten or eleven thousand that are in the city. You have three deputies and one sergeant that are out, that are assigned to this area. So just real quick math, what is that per, uh, was that three thousand, uh, three thousand per deputy?
Right.
Shift, something around there?
Close to it.
I, I would say because the population outside is, you've got a higher concentration of deputies within the city limits than you have in the Avon Park Lakes area. Or the Placid Lakes area, because those, those numbers, just in those communities, like Placid Lakes, for example, there's over eleven thousand people just live in that community alone.
Right.
So you're, you're, you're deputy to, your deputy to citizen population or ratio is going to be higher within the city limits.
Yeah.
But, but I'll still give you those.
Perfect, thank you. Any other questions?
I just have one more question. Animal services for Avon Park, do we have a deputy assigned that is in the animal services part?
Not to the city of, of, of.
Avon Park.
Avon Park, my mind went blank.
So whenever, okay, so then the only way they come to Avon Park is if there's a call.
No, ma'am. So you have one assigned to the north district, which, which is from, like I said, Home Depot area of Sebring, all the way to the county line. And then you have one that's assigned from there to hmm, around ninety-eight, twenty-seven.
So you, you only have two animal services? I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
So you have one in this north district, you have one in the Sebring area, you have one in the Lake Placid area.
Okay.
Now, and then, and then you have a rover. So, and then you have, like if we had a situation up here in Avon Park that took more than one animal control officer, that person from Sebring would come help out, or we would assign a deputy to come help that, help that officer until they got things under control. Uh, but again, talking to, about the ad valorem taxes, that's another benefit that the ci- city of Avon Park, residents that live here in the city experience. They don't necessarily have one assigned here, but there is one covering calls for service in the city of Avon.
Okay, 'cause here's my problem with that. Not really a problem, I guess I shouldn't say I have a problem with it, but I, I did make a call one time, and there was a dog that was in our neighborhood that was hmm, I would say he probably wasn't nice, you know, he was one of those little cuddly things, but, so I called the non-emergency phone number. I was connected to the, uh, animal services. They were gone. After five o'clock, they're gone. And they're not there on the weekends either.
That's correct.
So if we were to have an emergency, what, am I supposed to call the nine, the, the emergency line and tell them that we have a bad dog here in the neighborhood?
Absolutely. If you feel it's an emergency, you're more than welcome to call nine one one anytime. We do not have the, the, the resources to have animal services, or nor, nor the there were calls for service to justify having twenty-four seven coverage.
But even if it's not twenty-four seven, couldn't there just be, um, like an on-call type situation? I mean, 'cause there's times that.
We have them on call, but they're only gonna come out and on-call for an emergency.
Okay, so then if you have this dog Friday at five o'clock, and he's wandering around the neighborhood, I have to wait until Monday or Tuesday in order for somebody to come and check on it.
If it's.
Unless I feel it's dangerous.
If you feel it's dangerous, we will send a deputy. A deputy can put it in, in his, in his, or her patrol car. They will take it to up here, they'll take it to the north district. There's a, there's a kennel there, they will lock it up in the kennel. And then the next day, whoever the animal services officer is that comes out, they go out to our facility to feed the dogs and clean out pens and stuff, they will swing by here and get that animal and take it to the animals.
Okay, I just, I didn't know that, because you know, what I think is a nasty, dangerous dog, you guys may not think it's a nasty, dangerous dog. And I just didn't want to waste time calling the nine, nine, one line when.
Never, it's never a waste of time, and if you feel that you're, you're unsatisfied with the, the response that you got from the organization, there is always a supervisor out, one here in the city of Avon Park. And if you're not satisfied with that answer, there's a lieutenant that that sergeant answers to. Feel free to request them to give you a call, and, and they will, they will come and either try to explain it to you, or they'll, they'll make a different decision on, on what the situation may be.
And Sheriff Blackman, I had the same problem where I called because I thought there was a bad dog. He was foaming at the mouth, and I was afraid to go and get in my car. I called them, and they said that, uh, this is what they told me. I was pissed. Get a, a cage and trap him and bring him in. Now, I'm too afraid to even get in my car. Now, I'm too afraid to even get in my car. But they want me to go and get a cage and trap him and bring him in.
So counsel.
Because
Could you tell me when that happened? Because that's an inappropriate response.
This was a, I I just know that it was earlier this year, like right after New Year's. And I'm like, are you, are you kidding me? You want me to go out here and 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 go to the store and buy a cage? Because it's not like I have a cage handy, okay? I got to go and buy a cage. I got to trap this dog and then put him in my vehicle and bring him to you.
Sure, sure. So there is nothing appropriate about sending anybody out to handle a dog who was foaming at the mouth. Uh as you put it, uh I I would be, I would be disappointed if our if our communication center said that. Uh but if you, again, if you can give me the times and dates, uh I will address that with the supervisors immediately. Because we should not be telling our people that at all.
Go back from January and listen to some of the calls, Sheriff. But here's my next thing. What what is um, what is this, the inside of city city limits, South Side, Delaney, Hal McGray? What is our chances of getting a substation there? Because I think majority of the South Side crimes happen right there in that area. And I felt as though if there was a presence of a deputy there, I think it would alleviate a lot of our crimes, especially the killings. That that's just my personal opinion. So what is our, what is our chances of getting a substation right there on uh Delaney and Hal McGray?
So uh I think you and I have had this conversation before in a public forum. And my comp, and my my answer to that question then is the same as it is now. We can always negotiate the contract. And if it's something that the city wants to do and build a structure there to put a to put a a law enforcement officer there, we'll be more than happy to entertain that. Uh but just to say, me to sit here and answer that question, there's there's a lot that goes into just creating a substation, the purchase of property, the building of a structure.
No property shares, building is already there waiting on you.
Well, this is, this is probably a topic for you and the council to decide. And then if you decide that, then we can certainly look at our contract and see if the contract would take, you know, more funding to put an officer there full time. That's up to you guys.
Okay, when when I brought it to you, you, Sheriff, I was talking about with the amount of money that we already paying. What about us getting a substation?
I I would remind you that this year's budget alone was a shortfall of about four hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
All right. Anything else? Yes, you'll have to do the usual though. Name and address for the record.
Chris County, one oh nine East Main Street. Just a quick question, um came up in our early meeting. Uh homeless and potential uh drug byproducts being left on the ground. Is there, what is the limitations or opportunity for you guys to, because we have all these things going on, Main Street, South, South Side, Parks, Donaldson Park, and and by the way, thanks for being here. Um but what are the uh opportunities that that you can provide to maybe eliminate or mitigate that? Thank you.
So thank you for your question, and and it is a topic that is uh not only here in the city of Avon Park, but all throughout the county regarding homeless and and what we can and cannot do regarding to that. Uh there was a new law passed this year uh that allows for no sleeping in public, which basically we would hope to cover the the homeless situation uh and and how we handle that. Uh Polk County Sheriff's Office and Polk County in general is in the process there in a final reading of an ordinance that will deal with that. And uh we are waiting. For those who don't know, Polk County, Highlands County and Hardy County were all in the same, the tenth judicial circuit. So as soon as they get theirs passed and they don't see any problems with that, our our uh county attorney is on is on board. And as soon as they get it passed and they don't see any issues with that, we're going to have uh an ordinance here so that the language is consistent. Uh and then we will be able to enforce that. As soon as I get that information, I will pass that on to Ms. Kelly so that she has that so you guys can get it on on your agenda so that we can handle that as quickly as possible. Hopefully I answered your question.
Perfect, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Except to give your name and address for the record, please.
Padreca Shepherd, three oh five Ernest E Sims Street. I'm one of the people that call Councilman Taylor quite a bit because of the noise that we're having. I live further than she does. I have a ninety-three-year-old mom and the windows are just pounding. As far as Ernest E Sims Street, that street has become they leave Memorial, come through there because they're building a new school, Hopewell Elementary. The traffic is horrendous. I have stopped my mother and the lady across the street that have been there, taxpaying people all their lives. Ernest E Sims is basically an older street in Avon Park. There's a lot of people that have been there all their lives. So there's a lot of elderly women there. So I took it amongst myself to sort of watch out for them. I have stopped them, most of them from driving because they just drive so recklessly. I'm concerned about somebody's going to hit one of these elderly pedestrians. I don't even walk in the morning anymore. I used, I walk from Ernest E Sims, hit Memorial, go all the way down to the store at the end. The traffic is, my husband's concerned about one of those trucks are going to hit something and hit me. So it's getting very bad. Is there a a officer you have by the name of Tyson? He shouldn't be the only person that's coming over to the South Side. He should not be the only police officer that's coming over to the South Side to speak to our young black men because there's a lot of crimes there. I personally was there when the shooting at Ali Matt White Park. I have a grandson, and I think I told them, I have a grandson that's in Polk County. He doesn't even want to come to Highlands County anymore. But I'm here. So I want him to come here to play. But he's afraid of Ali Matt White Park. Those little towers that you have, they're not doing anything. They're I'm done. I just didn't want Ms. Taylor to feel like she was on her own.
So I'm, you don't have to go anywhere. I was just going to respond to you. Then get all your questions out before I responded. So uh Lieutenant Tyson is over the cops adapt unit. He's not the only deputy that goes down into uh into what we would call South Side of Avon Park, Ernest E Sims. Actually, he had Omar Speakman, who who is a a deputy that's in there all the time. Uh uh Deputy Fillmore and Deputy Perez, all a part of that cops adapt unit who who spend a majority of their time in those areas. Uh and 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 I don't know, I'm sorry that you haven't seen them or come in contact with them, but they're in there all the time. Absolutely all the time. Uh the this, the towers that you said are doing no good in there, I I would beg to differ. Those towers have helped us solve more crimes in those areas than we could ever count. And it is absolutely important that we have those things in there and that we leave them in there. Uh the community, actually the church that the uh that the tower is sitting in, they were so thankful that we put that there in their parking lot. And and I constantly get calls from from the pastor there to say, please don't take it away, leave it there. It's it's makes us feel safe. So I I would beg to differ. That's just my, I see your side of the story, but I'm telling you my side. Uh as far as the the traffic that is speeding to the Hopewell site that's being built, can, do you think those are construction workers that are going there? I I'm not familiar with it. So is it, is it open? So I I we will send somebody by there and make contact with the construction.
Uh young kids that walk to school.
Totally understand. We will, we're more than happy to send somebody by there, speak to the construction workers, explain to them what your concerns are or what the neighborhood's concerns are and see if we can get a uh an an issue like that resolved. It generally just takes us going by there one time and and talking to them. Uh you calling Mrs. Taylor, I'm sure she appreciate, well, it sounds like it it sounds like she might be tired if she's calling. I would encourage you to call the non-emergency line at the Highlands County Sheriff's Office. That's going to take a that's going to take something that could be lost in translation between you, to her, to us. Obviously, she doesn't even call us, so it's it's falling on deaf ears, so to speak, because there's nothing getting done. Call the Highlands County Sheriff's Office so that we can send a deputy over and we can resolve. I can't take care of a problem that Ms. Bernice gets and never tells us. It's hard for us to do that.
I will stop calling you, Ms. Bernice.
True, thank you, thank you.
Please.
I know the road. Brenda Gray, four ten East Lakeview Drive, Avon Park, Florida. I'd just like to say, first of all, Sheriff Blackman, I thank you all for putting your towers up all over Avon Park. I've seen them over by the church and I've seen them up on Hal McRand Delaney. I have several business people who had asked me why they take it down? Can it stay there a little bit longer? How do you, my question is, how do you decide where to put them at and when to take them down? And can they stay there longer?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. And thank you for your question, Ms. Gray. The the answer to your question is how we decide is is basically if someone calls us and and says, hey, I've got a concern. We we will move it to that area or if we have an event uh that's coming up. Uh and I'm just going to use Highway Park and Lake Classic for an example. Each year they have an Easter
Yeah.
Uh block party. We will take it down there and set it up there usually a week before the party and we usually leave it there a week after the party. And it was, and Ms. Cologne, Evelyn Cologne, who runs their neighborhood, she'll call me. I want you to get that thing out of here. We'll go down there and get it and get it out of the way. Uh but basically, that's how, that's how we use it. We have one in the Washington Heights area of Sebring. Uh just because that's an area, a a high crime area where we have a lot of violent crimes. So we leave it there. Uh basically, that's how we determine, that's how we determine where it's going to be and how it's going to get there. So noted.
Sheriff Blackman, how many of those um towers do you have per county? I mean, for the county.
I'm gonna, I think two, but let me look at my major because he can probably answer that better than I. We have two, yes, yes, ma'am.
How how much, you know, I know you don't know, but maybe you can give me an estimate. How much one of these towers cost?
They're generally about between two hundred and fifty, three hundred thousand dollars.
And you only have two per the county?
Yes, ma'am, I only have two.
And you think that that's all you need? I'm just
No, ma'am.
You you think you need more?
I'm I'm restricted by the dollar bill. I I would have ten of them if I could. I can't afford them. Yes, ma'am.
Well, let me, I I've been asked this question too, that uh if the city was able to put up cameras on that church building, uh they would eventually be able to hook up to uh site that you could either look at it live or recording, as well as there any thoughts about uh uh license plate readers or things like that, uh shot, um shot cameras if somebody, a shot goes off. So there's our progress with as far as that issue.
So so thank you for your question, Ms. Bernard. Uh we uh the answer to some of your questions is yes. The city of Avon Park has been very gracious and they let us have access to cameras all over the city. Uh in which those those cameras have helped us solve many crimes, just like the ones in the towers. Uh we we utilize them pretty much on a daily basis. There's sometimes when, as as Murphy's Law, so to speak, is, you know, an incident will happen and we'll go check that camera and it it just broke two weeks before or something. So if we could, if I could get a person assigned to do nothing but go around and make sure cameras were operational, that would be great. Uh however, the the city of Avon Park has been more than cooperative and and working with us at the sheriff's office and getting us access to those feeds. Uh and I I would hope that that would continue. Uh ALPRs in the county, we have several of them. Uh we u- we utilize them as well every day. Depending upon which side of the aisle you're on, some people think it's big brother watching you. Uh but uh those, those those have returned children home safely. Those have solved crimes for us. Uh and and uh we're just very, very thankful that uh an agency the size of ours, which we would be considered a small to medium-sized organization in the law enforcement world, to have access to those, to that technology, along with a real-time crime center, our citizens are very, very fortunate. Thank you.
Okay, me, one more time.
All right.
Um, two things. Your first, does your budget, not necessarily the budget you get from Avon Park, but your whole budget, do you allow for a mental health um program? Do you have mental health programs?
That's correct. Yes.
Okay.
We have them assigned in our jail. Because that's generally where most of our mental health.
Of course, yeah, that's where they end up.
End up.
Um and the next thing, the community watch vehicles that I see that they don't, they're not deputies, right? They're community watch. Okay, so are they assigned to the city limits or are they citywide?
They are assigned to the county.
Okay.
So there are there are citizens on patrol.
Okay.
Most of them are volunteers. I think we have one that is paid. Actually, we have two that are paid that uh that uh that they come out and they're, they work nine to five or eight to five, Monday through Friday. But the rest of them are volunteers. They assist with traffic control on crashes. They do bin checks. They will do, this time of year, they play a very important role for us because all of our northern residents that have gone back. Uh if, you know, they have something going on at their house or they want us to do extra patrol, uh they see a suspicious vehicle or something in their neighborhood because of ring camera, that's who handles all of that stuff.
So how does that work if he sees crime?
He
In the process, they, they see crime in the process, they would call it in?
Yes, ma'am. They have access to everything in their cars, just like a a deputy sheriff. They have access to a radio. They are dispatched to calls. If they saw something suspicious, we train them not to approach. They just stand back and be a set of eyes for our deputy until the deputy gets there. And those, those are volunteers that 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 really save our our citizens a lot of money each year.
And so would they ever come out and answer a call or that's on only a deputy?
They would only answer a call that may be delayed. So or they would answer a a call for service that might be a a fraud or something of that nature where someone had their identity stole. They would come out and handle
To gather information.
To to get to to to, they they could actually do a report on something like that. Uh we try, we would not ever send them to anything in progress.
Right, okay.
All right, anything else for the sheriff?
Thank you for being
Absolutely. It's my pleasure to be here and I apologize. I I took up too much of your time. It looked like you guys were on roll to have a short meeting tonight. And I have ruined that. I apologize.
Worst thing that happened. Thank you very much for being here.
So if if, so I I've got some uh, I've got copies of what I just read from and stuff to give all of you. Is that okay?
That's perfect.
Then I promise I will get out of your way.
Actually, if it's okay with you, I'd just like to have mine emailed if you don't mind.
We'll be looking for a motion to approve resolution twenty-five dash oh seven.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero seven.
We have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Council.
Um, you know, by June or July, you've at least received word, but you're getting a site visit. And then from there, if you're getting a site visit, you're, you've scored high enough to where they're looking at, you know, considering funding.
Resolution number two, two thousand twenty-five dash oh eight. A resolution of the city of Avon Park authorized the implementation of long-term, short-term objectives of the city of Avon Park Community Development Plan.
Yeah, we're looking for a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh eight.
I'll make a motion to approve resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight.
Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Resolution number two thousand twenty-five dash oh nine. A resolution authorizing the use of fifty thousand dollars of city of, of Avon Park funding as leverage for the small cities neighborhood revitalization, community development, block grant application, the city submitting to the Florida Commerce for federal fiscal year two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-four.
Do we have a motion to approve resolution number twenty twenty-five dash oh nine?
So move.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, any questions? Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion.
Yes, Fox, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that's number eighteen, it's Kimley Horned Associates, Inc., individual project order number twenty-nine.
Good evening, Count. Good evening, Council, uh, Joseph Sleva. Uh, tonight we're in front of you to approve the Kimley Horned Associates IPO twenty-nine. Uh, the individual project, um, is covering the, the Avon Park wastewater treatment facility FDP permit renewal. And it's including the collection system action plan, power outage contingency plan and O and M manual for collection system. As a requirement for the, um, permit, it's, uh, due May twenty twenty-six, uh, for the treatment facility. Uh, as part of that, it is now required to have a collection system action plan, power outage contingency plan and O and M manual. The submittal, the, I think, oh, I'm gonna backtrack. I have, uh, Jameson from Kimley Horn with me so he can kind of go over some of this project.
Hi, good evening, Ja- Jameson Tondro with Kimley Horn. Uh, for this project, uh, you know, the city has a DEP permit for the wastewater treatment plant and you have to renew that every five years. So that permit renewal, uh, it's, or the permit expires May ninth. However, you're required to submit for the permit renewal hundred and eighty days before that. Um, so that date is November tenth, uh, twenty twenty-five. And a permanent renewal includes a, a capacity analysis report, includes a operation maintenance performance report. So that's typical, um, but there's been some new requirements now that requires um, utilities to submit collection system action plans and power outage contingency plans. So that's something new. Now, whenever you renew a permit or make a major modification, that's something DP is now required. So that's, you know, a separate task that we included as part of the proposal. And i- it's really like the city being proactive from the collection system action plan as they're requiring you to evaluate twenty-five percent of the collection system every five years. So it's including a plan, it's how the city is kind of like documenting how you're um, operating and maintaining equipment, how you're gonna evaluate the collection system um, in the future. And also a part of this is the operation maintenance plan for the collection system. Um, just documenting how the city maintains and operates, um, its infrastructure, which is a requirement by DP.
Okay. Any questions for Kimley Horn or City Step? Seeing none, do we have a motion to approve item D eighteen?
I'll make a motion to approve D eighteen, Kimley Horn IPO number twenty-nine.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion in a second, last call for questions. Seeing none, please call the roll.
Councilmember McGuire?
Yes.
Councilmember McCure?
Yes.
Councilmember Tyler?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Bernard?
Yes.
Mayor Anderson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. All right, that concludes our regular agendas or anything else for the city?
I just have a question.
Go ahead.
So this is from Mr. Silva or, right, Sleva, sorry, or Dr. Kelly. So the other night there was a water made for, or a water break. And I noticed online that you posted it. But there was a lot of people that were mad because it was sixteen hours later than it happened. So my question is, don't we utilize the go.gov, whatever the, um, the, um, text capabilities to let people know that there's a boil water notice earlier than sixteen hours later?
Uh, the following morning, we finished about eleven thirty at night, um, right by the high school. And I had, uh, got with IT the next morning to have it posted. I, I believe it was due to my lack of where it needed to be. Just kind of track history, putting the boil water notices out, kind of thought that it was better yet, no. Um, but again, I didn't follow up. I knew it was on, I knew it was done, I just didn't know that all three of our outlets weren't utilized.
So maybe in the future, we could just make sure that that's done because that really upsets people really bad.
Understandable. We are researching if we're able to push that out through the BSNA system when it's one of those citywide notifications because they do have the email address of most of our utility, um, our water customers. I do want to say, if I may, can I do my city manager updates?
Oh, I forgot.
You get to that, Dr. Kelly, I got a question on the water break. When do it's supposed to come out?
As soon as possible, yes.
And what you call soon as possible?
Uh, as soon as we're able to get to computer access and upload the notice and get the information out.
So it don't supposed to come out? I'm just asking, it don't supposed to come out when we know that, when there's a water break, like, there's a water break? We don't send out a message after we find out there's a water? I'm asking.
That's not been my experience. I mean, if that's the protocol you want to use, we can certainly look at changing that.
I, I guess what I'm trying to say is, if you're not posting a water break message until after it's been completed, right? Then what purpose is it serving? You, you got people using the water from the time it broke until the time you post the message out later.
Yep, why don't you just think of some ways that you can make it faster and come back to us with how you intend to solve the problem?
Or may, maybe even do a proactive type thing and notify everybody if you lose water pressure as a common.
Right.
You know, thing, just go ahead and boil water until told otherwise.
Make a best practice.
Right.
Yes.
Okay, city manager report.
Thank you. Uh, Memorial Drive paid being project, we finally got notification from the county that CSX has approved us, them to move forward June ninth through June twelfth. So if that changes, I will let you know. New Hope is having an open house of May fourteenth at ten AM. There's a grand reopening of Alien McWhite Park on May twenty-second at ten AM. Everybody's invited. And I would just like to say that this is Joseph Sleva's last meeting with us. I wish him well in his new endeavors and he will be missed.
Boo.
Thank you.
Don't go.
You'll be missed, brother.
Appreciate that.
Yeah, appreciate what you've been, what you've done.
Thank you.
Anything else? Anything else for the city? Seeing none, we entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn, please.
Seeing the opposition, we are adjourned. Have a good one.